The Town of Farmington. Respecting history, planning the future.
Good evening. Welcome to the Farmington Town Council meeting, and I'd like to ask everyone to please stand and join us with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask everyone to stay standing for a moment, and I'd like to just have a moment of silence in a minute in honor of all of the people that were lost in 9/11 a number of years ago, and also to remember all the first responders and the people that were just -- that helped out everywhere. I mean, I think it was a time in our country that everyone joined together to help one another in so many ways and just stepped in and stepped up. So I'd like to remember all of those that were affected that day, and please just have a moment of silence. Public hearing, Paula.
A public hearing will be held on September 11, 2018, at 7:05 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers to amend Farmington Town Code, Chapter 111, Historic Areas, for the purpose of adding four historic properties under the jurisdiction of the Unionville Historic District and Properties Commission. A copy of the proposed ordinance is on file in the office of the Town Clerk, Town Hall, Monty's Drive, Farmington, Connecticut, dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this 28th day of August 2018. Kathy A. Egan, Town Manager.
Hi. We have Shannon, our Assistant Town Planner, who is going to give us our public hearing tonight.
Thank you. Welcome. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. As Kathy noted, I'm Shannon Rutherford, the Assistant Town Planner, and I am staff assistant to the Unionville Historic Commission. And they are pleased to present to you this evening four properties to add to the district. And I have a brief slide presentation that describes the four properties, the process the commission has gone through to date, and then we can -- I can answer questions, and we can move ahead from there. So the first property that's being added to the district is 1761 Farmington Avenue, which is historically known as the Omri Ford House and is currently owned by Carol Ketchum. This home will be in addition to the Farmington River Historic District. The second property is located on 20 Elm Street, which is historically known as the Dr. William Sage House, and is currently owned by Matthew and Mayling Kilfoyle. And this home will be in addition to the Clover Penny Park Historic District. And this is a barn that is also on that property. The third property is known as 42 and 44 Maple Avenue, which is historically known as the Plattner and Porter Rental House Number Four, and is currently owned by Cynthia Long, Timothy LeBoutier, Patrick LeBoutier, children of Joseph and Patricia LeBoutier. This home will be in addition to the Clover Penny Park Historic District as well. And the final home to be added is 230 Main Street, which is historically known as the William Griswold House, and is currently owned by Truman Alderman Jr. This home will be a standalone historic property within Unionville, as it's not immediately adjacent to any of the established districts. And so there's the home, and this one also has a nice lovely barn at the back of the property. So I'm going to skip back to the first slide, which is a map of the historic district. And in blue in the upper left is where 230 Main Street is, and the green is the 42-44 Maple Avenue, the yellow is 20 Elm Street, and the red is 1761 Farmington Avenue. The areas that are shaded in gray are the existing homes within the district's homes and properties. To date, the committee has completed a number of the steps required to remove -- to move the report through the approval process. This process is outlined in the C.T. Trust for Historic Preservation Handbook for Historic District Commissions and Historic Property Commissions, and is dated 2010, and follows along with the requirements of the Connecticut general statutes. To date, the committee has completed the following actions. The report was submitted to the Farmington Plan and Zoning Commission and the Historic Preservation Council on April 5 of 2018. The Farmington Plan and Zoning Commission issued a positive endorsement on the report on May 1 of 2018. The Historic Preservation Council recommended approval of the report on May 11, 2018. The Unionville Historic District and Properties Committee held a properly noticed public hearing on the report on June 14, 2018. A representative of each of the four homes was in attendance for that hearing. There were no comments in opposition to the homes being added to the Unionville Historic District from any of the attendees. The next step in the process was to provide the report to the Town Clerk and the Town Manager. This was done on June 25, 2018. This initiated the balloting process for the three homes that were being added to districts. As I noted, the property at 230 Main Street is a standalone property, and its process for acceptance is different and does not require a balloting process. They have a separate appeal process, which they were made aware of and did not appeal. And the final step is here this evening to hold the public hearing for the council to accept the report and amend the ordinance. And I believe Paula has the information with respect to the balloting that was done.
That the balloting was unanimous in favor of joining the district. Thank you.
Okay. And that's all I have for you this evening. Obviously, if there's questions, I'm happy to answer any.
Thank you, Shannon.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And at this time, I'll open it up for the public hearing for the community. Please just state your name, your address, and you have five minutes to speak.
I only had three minutes before, now I have five, but I promise I'll say it. Jay Bombara, 13 Mountain Road, Farmington. I actually live in the village. I'm also chairman of the Farmington Historic District. It sounds like this is getting a favorable reception from everybody, which is fantastic. I just wanted to voice my strong support for this. I think if you look at any of the studies and feedback that the council or the town gets from citizens, the first things they think about when they think about Farmington are its historic nature, as well as its green nature. And it's not just Farmington Center, as we know, but it's also Unionville. So I think it's a terrific effort by the Unionville Historic District, the Town Council, the Town Planners, to identify these properties. And sometimes it can be difficult to get people to agree to put them in, but it sounds like they're being very successful. In fact, I got to get some tips from them. So I strongly endorse that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, with that, I'll close the hearing. And we'll move on to presentation. Ken Slater, would you please come up?
Good evening.
Good evening.
We don't really have a presentation for Ken, but we do have in your packet the letter from the Farmington Land Trust that Ken has seen and our conservation easement. And as you know, we've been talking about this for a few meetings, and the last meeting we had left that there were some legal questions, some various things that possibly the council wanted answered before they gave some direction about what our next steps on this parcel was. So I asked Ken to come, and just if there was some questions, some comments, some thoughts about it, and while he's here, he can answer, so we don't have to keep on kind of going back and forth, back and forth with it. So I'll turn it over to the council.
And Ken is going to give a little -- just a little chat about this to begin with, and then we'll ask questions. We'll open it up.
The chair asked me very briefly just to set it up for the questions in that I -- that there was, as Town Manager Egan pointed out in her report, there was a resolution that the board wanted the Town Manager and the Town Attorney to work together to look at the possibility of a conservation easement at the suggestion of the Farmington Land Trust. And on this property, which was the property of the IUD Company October 24, what's -- one thing that's notable is I also reviewed the conservation easement that was put in place when the State of Connecticut granted. It was originally acquired for a little bit over $1 million. The State of Connecticut opened grant funds, and a little bit more than a half a million dollars was provided to the town, and in turn, there's a conservation easement that has been recorded in favor of the State of Connecticut that prevents the development of the property and essentially allows it to be used for passive recreation. You can maintain trails and roads and such related to passive recreation, which is defined in the statute. So the property is already subject to limitations in terms of development. So we also had discussed briefly the differences between what an actual easement is, where granting the land is acquired, and another kind of an agreement, which is not -- doesn't run with the land, but runs in favor of an individual and organization along the lines of a license. And the difference with that is it's revocable. And so that was something that we looked into and advised the Town Manager about. So with that basic framework, then I'm here to answer any questions you might have in terms of the legal issues associated with how the property can be used today, or what the ramifications might be in terms of granting an easement versus some other kind of legal interest, or perhaps no interest at all other than affiliation with the land trust to work together on the property.
Edward.
Yes. Yeah, you said you read through the state easement. Based on your legal opinion, does that state easement allow for another easement to be placed on the property? Is there anything?
There's nothing that would prevent another encumbrance, as long as it wasn't inconsistent with the provisions of the original easement. For example, you gave an easement to entitle, you know, the school to build, you know, a driveway and a -- and have a temporary right to be able to have ball fields. Well, that's directly contrary to what you're allowed to do in light of the earlier easement. So the ability to grant an easement is not prohibited under the grant of the conservation easement to the State of Connecticut, but the terms of an easement would have to be consistent. So the terms of the proposed easement that were drafted that conceivably go to the Farmington Land Trust is not inconsistent with the state's easement, overlaps in some ways. Thank you.
Other questions? Bruce.
Yeah. I think I know the answer to this, so I'm just going to ask it. In terms of the state putting an easement on the property, so it's a twofold question. So in terms of that particular easement, that is really protecting the property as open space, number one. Number two, what if, and we never know what's going to happen 100 years from now, that the state comes in and takes it for eminent domain, and there's existing easements on the property? How does that work?
The state can take the easements as well. So when the -- in fact, we even have issues of that in Farmington right now, looking at some of the eminent domain that was done in terms of the Parsons property in the corner, whether or not the state, you know, took all of the necessary easement rights that were in there, because the state can take land and leave easements in place, but they can also take the easements as well. And anyone who has valuable property rights by way of easement, they would be entitled to some compensation as well if the State of Connecticut took that. I mean, in this particular instance, the state already owns the development rights by way of the conservation easement. So if they did do a taking, it would be a more limited taking, because there's not as many, you know, I'm talking in law school about having the bundle of sticks, which is what when you own land, there's, you know, you can have the whole thing with no limitations whatsoever, or you can give, you know, your interest to the bank when you do a mortgage, or you can grant easements, et cetera. Right now, the town does own the land, but it -- part of the rights it would ordinarily have as a property owner have been acquired by the State of Connecticut as part of the conservation easement and the grant funds that came to the state. So if they did ever want to take it, it would certainly not be as valuable as if you owned a piece of land that was not encumbered at all. But that would also -- they'd have the ability to take the Farmington Land Trust easement if you granted one, if the state so chose to.
So just to pile on to that, just so I fully understand and people in the audience understand, so if the state takes the easement, what does that mean? That it doesn't exist anymore, or does it exist?
Correct. The eminent domain, the government has the power to take any real estate rights and convert that into personal property, money. And so by following the right process, then the state would own -- could own that land free and clear of anyone else's interest. And all of the people who own an interest in the land would be entitled to what the value of the real estate would be, and that's a constitutional protection. So all the people, you know, if you were a one-quarter interest holder, then you might have to get fair value for what a one-quarter interest holder is. If you held an easement in the land and that's been taken away from you, that has a value as well. Think of it, maybe you had an easement over someone's land, and it's the only way you can get to your property. That easement is very valuable. If an easement is, you know, sort of a stewardship easement like the one that we have here, I'd suggest that the value to the land trust is not a big number like it would be if you were denied any reasonable use of your land, but it would have value, and there would have to be compensation paid to the holder of that easement for whatever, either an agreement with the state, or appraiser would have to be -- appraisal would have to be performed and would say, what would an easement interest like this be worth? And that's what they would be entitled to through the court system.
Okay. And then I know one of our questions that we had the last time was the stewardship. The land trust committee is recommending that if we grant them this easement, that they would perform a stewardship, and they gave us a report of items that they would be looking at. Who is responsible if the land trust identifies something on the property and nothing is done based on what they identified, and someone accidentally gets hurt? Who is liable if the town or -- who would be liable for that person if they did come forward to us saying that they got hurt?
Well, I learned enough in law school to say, I'm not going to tell you the town's going to be liable for anything, and we'd leave that to when and if any kind of claim was made. That said, if the town is on notice of a particular problem on real estate that it owns, and it's been notified that there is an issue, and something happens that obviously could give rise to some kind of a claim. There are different kinds of rights that people have. There's protections that can be provided for giving access to recreational uses. There's some limited rights people have to try to recover if they've been injured when they've been using land that's been -- where there's a right to use it by recreation. So there'd be a whole host of potential claims and a whole host of potential defenses. But it really wouldn't be unlike, you know, Town Hall grounds where someone's writing a letter to the council and the Town Manager saying that, I think you've got a sinkhole that's developing in the back of the building, you better do something about it, you never do it, and somebody gets gravely injured. That could present a problem. So whether it's by way of a formal easement or by way of people just passively using recreation on that land, if the town is notified and there's a paper trail of that, you know, that could pose some risks to the town. So you'd have to pay attention and decide, you know, if there is a genuine issue that needs attention on the land owned by the town.
Thank you.
CJ.
Just to follow up on Bruce's scenario of eminent domain, so if the state came in and took a piece of property that's under eminent domain, the potentially the easement is null and void. They can do whatever they want with it. Also, you said if there was a secondary easement on it, say in this case to the land trust, they would potentially be receiving some type of financial compensation, the land trust would. So we're actually, if we give them an easement, we're giving them real value, something that has monetary value on it.
Correct. I mean, you have to -- what you're looking at is what would somebody pay whenever you have an appraiser value land, and this is what the state or the federal government does before they file a certificate of taking, and they determine what they think your property's worth, and then they give you a notice. I mean, usually they try to get an agreement with you, but if you don't do an agreement, they file papers in the court that said, I've taken your property and I've deposited X dollars on account, and your right is to take that money and be done with it, or you have the ability to challenge the number and to try to persuade a court that that number isn't fair. So if you own a property that's completely unencumbered, obviously that has a lot of value. In this case, if the land trust was given an easement, it has the rights behind the State of Connecticut, and those rights would be to provide the stewardship and to prevent any development of the property. So how an appraiser would look at that, as to whether, how marketable that is and what that's really worth, it's hard to say. But it would be an interest in the land, and if it -- and as a person with interest in the land, if the land trust could demonstrate that it had some value in the marketplace, that they'd be entitled to some portion of the money that the state or federal government would have deposited to, or the court would find, is the land was worth if it's taken.
If a future council and future land trust ever had a dispute over the stewardship, you know, if they were living up to their end of the bargain, what would the recourse be? You know, what would the recourse be for that council?
It would be in the courts if someone -- but it's a -- the way that, at least the draft that was presented, if you, you know, the only thing I think that the -- if they failed to put the signage up, they failed to do the reports, they failed to do the things that they were supposed to do, then, you know, I think you'd notify the land trust that they're not adhering to their responsibilities under the agreement, and if they didn't start doing the things that aren't in consideration for the deal, because that's ordinarily, you know, when there's one of these conservation easements, it's because money is being provided, like the State of Connecticut did with its conservation easement, or I'm an owner of land that's worth a lot of money and I'm willing to give it to you, but I'm only willing to give it to you with some kind of restriction onto use, or there's something else that's given for the interest. Here, the consideration is their promise to do all of the stewardship on the land, and that's what they're bargaining in exchange for the easement. And if they're not holding up their end of the bargain, I guess you would go to the court to try to force them to do that. It's not really a monetary type damage, I don't believe. It would just be an order that they need to perform, and perhaps there could be provisions in which it would revert back to the town, or a court could find that it reverts back to the town, and they've lost the rights of the easement by failing to adhere to their responsibilities, but it would be with the court.
Thanks.
Ken, I want to go back to the liability question that Bruce was starting at. So we have the one scenario, if the town is on notice and it's given rise to a claim, then there's potential liability. What is the town's obligation to manage the open space land that it has, especially if there's a hiking trail on the land and it knows the public is accessing this land and using this land? What's the town's obligation to actually monitor it itself and to keep an eye out for nuisances and hazards and dangerous conditions?
Having open land that's being made available to the public for passive recreation, usually the obligations are relatively low. It's not the same thing as keeping your sidewalks, you know, your sidewalks clean after a snowstorm. So the expectation of the way that the property is going to be managed by the town is relatively low, it's natural, but to the extent that, you know, you have -- there's notice, that you know that there is a very dangerous condition and you don't do anything about it, I think that's when your liability and your risks increase.
What in this scenario of, because I know the state's has its own provisions of going through the Claims Commission, but say there's a scenario, windstorm, massive weather damage, there's hanging trees, branches, someone's hiking, the tree -- the town doesn't have notice of this yet, but the town has arguably constructive notice that there's likely damage to the area. Someone's hiking, the tree falls on that hiker, and the hiker is either severely injured or killed. Is the town, without actual notice, does the town have liability?
Not likely. That said, I've received complaints that have been filed against municipalities and things where the municipalities certainly believe they had no notice, and so if somebody makes a claim, you should have had notice, and, you know, so those things can happen. You don't have the kind of protections the state has. The state has sovereign immunity, and you alluded to that. You can't sue the state unless they give you permission, with some exceptions that we don't have to worry about right now, but for the most part, you have to go to the Claims Commission because they have sovereign immunity. You have what's called governmental immunity, and that immunity applies in situations where if you have discretion in making decision-making, you're generally immune from suit if there's some kind of harm that arguably came out of a decision that you made that you had discretion. If you have ministerial responsibility, then that's a situation where you do not have the same kind of protections. So there would be a battle as to whether or not that was something that you had reason to be inspecting and taking care of, and you, even though you didn't know it, you shouldn't have known about it. So there are complaints that have been made, you know, having to do with raw land against municipalities. I think more often than not, they're tough, you know, they're tough cases, and I think more often than not, they get, you know, settled for relatively small amounts, or perhaps tried successfully by the town, but it's still a risk.
Thank you.
But it's a risk of ownership as, you know, as it is as well, yeah.
I think your last statement there kind of gets to my question, and that is, given everything you've looked over and comparing the situation we have now, and then if the town looks to go forward with this easement, what is your assessment of increased risk, just in general, to the town?
I don't see it as a real increase in risk. You're going to be giving people the right, you know, in exchange for their making reports to the town, you're going to give them the right to be on the land. So the people that you're giving the rights to are going to be on their land by way of their easement if you did this. So they are using the land at their, you know, for the most part, based on their own property interest as opposed to a guest or a general member of the public. So to the extent that members of the land trust are then going to be on the land by way of the easement, I don't think that that raises a risk. If anything, perhaps lowers the risk with respect to them. Then there's the other issue of their stewardship. Is their stewardship going to improve their, you know, the way in which it can be accessed, make it safer, give you more notice? Or, you know, so that on the one hand, you could look at that might be favorable to the town, and on the other hand, there might be some kind of a paper trail, and you don't have the resources to deal with, you know, some, you know, trail on this large piece of land, and now a land trust with an easement, you know, makes, you know, many demands of the council to take action up there, which then creates the paper trail that we're concerned with. So I don't see it as a real -- you know, if we thought it was a problem, we would tell you. We'd say you should definitely not enter an agreement like that. It's not like that. I think there could be some advantages and disadvantages on both sides of the argument as to whether granting an easement to a land trust increases risks to the town or provides a benefit to the town. And the other thing is, what, you know, what opportunities do you have? Do you have to go through? And I saw in Kathy's memo that the land trust might not be interested in a license, but, you know, that certainly would suggest, you know, look, exploring opportunities of partnership that doesn't involve getting an actual interest in the land. And I don't know whether there really is any possibility of that, but the fact that a lot of time what land trusts want to be able to do is to ensure the property's not going to be developed in the future. Well, that ship's really sailed already on this one, because the state has that control. So a land trust, you know, need to say, I don't want to be involved with this property unless I can be assured that it's not going to be developed, might exist in another situation where they'd say, look, you got to give me an easement, or we're not going to do that kind of work. When it's already protected by way of the state easement, you know, there might be an opportunity that they would consider with some other form of an agreement that's not an easement, that still creates the partnership with, you know, maintaining and patrolling and reporting to the town. But if there is no other alternative, and this is something that the council supports, we don't feel that it presents a tremendous amount of risk to the town and is something that's consistent with the easement. But, you know, whether or not it's really necessary is a judgment you'll have to make. is, is a judgment you'll have to make.
Thank you. Follow-up to that, if, is there a scenario where the state easement goes away and the Farmington Land Trust easement would then become the primary easement that is the one controlling to make sure that the property can't be developed?
From a very technical standpoint, yes, just, you know, along the lines of our taxes getting reduced, you know, down to nil in the state of Connecticut. I, you know, the idea that the state of Connecticut is going to give up open space rights after paying, you know, half a million dollars on them down in the future, I, I think is remote at best, but from a legal standpoint, it is possible. The state of Connecticut could decide that, you know, sometime in the distant future, that for whatever reason, you know, you need to have some development on that land, and they own the development rights, they in theory could give them up. There could be, I, I tell you, it, we'll get too, too far in the weeds, no pun intended here, but they, there is even an argument that the public could try to block that from happening because of a public trust, there's public trust doctrines when, when things go into open space. Even if the state wanted to, there is, that could have some illegal entanglements, but I think practically speaking, the likelihood of the state ever wanting to do that is very, very low, but theoretically could happen, so a, an easement to a land trust behind it would provide another level of assurance that there wouldn't be any development in the extraordinarily unlikely event that the state of Connecticut reversed course and said you could develop that land.
Is there a way for the town to pay back the money and have the state remove the easement?
There's no, no right to do that. I mean, it, you could, the, the state of Connecticut owns, you know, owns those development rights, so you knock on the door and say you have the, you know, that amount of money or some larger amount of money, can, you know, you reverse the, reverse the easement, they might entertain it. The, the legal entanglement I'm talking about is they have a whole department at the Attorney General's office which deals with, you know, things that are in the public trust. I think that the state could still decide to take things that are a public trust, take it out. They could do pretty much what they want to do. So I think it is, it's conceivable, I haven't ever heard of it happening.
So the town, single-handedly, can't make the decision we don't want?
No. Nope, not at all.
Thank you.
So you said that it's, you've never seen this happen?
I've never heard, I've never seen the state, having provided money for open space, turn around and be willing to take a sum of money to give back the development rights to someone else. In every instance I'm aware of, it's permanent, whether it be farming, or whether it be agriculture, or whether it be just open space. When, when those kinds of grant funds, which for the purpose of protecting open space or supporting agriculture and, and preventing, you know, the development of property that has been devoted to agriculture, I've not seen that, you know, I'm not saying it hasn't happened, but I've seen a lot of those kinds of agreements, and I've never seen them having been reversed, and the state allowed development of the kinds of properties after they've, after they've acquired an easement like this.
So I would think then that we could go the next, that we could be pretty assured that when the state does that and gives us money, we have that protection?
I, yeah, I would be, I would be shocked, I mean, the only thing I can think of is, you know, when I'm long gone, it's some of the world, it becomes a very, very different place, but based on the lens of, of where we are right now, I cannot imagine that the state would give up the, the development rights that it acquired in that easement, having given it to them.
And having that easement from the state is what we've wanted with that property, as well as many others, almost 1,000 acres of open space in Farmington that guards us against that, excuse me. And a couple of things you mentioned, just to, to kind of make sure I'm, I'm hearing what you're saying. One of the things is that by doing this, we, it does, in, in a sense, you said it does, if the easement is on, it does up the value as far as what could possibly be taken away from the property, or, I'm not sure I...
Well, what it is, is it wouldn't, the, the, the property as a whole, with all the rights in existence, the property has a number. So if it had no easements, it had no mortgages, no anything, it's worth something and, and in the marketplace. Maybe it's completely undevelopable, that's going to affect this, but there would be a value there. Now, if the, if pieces of what are the entirety are given to different persons and different groups, if the state of Connecticut ever took the land, people who have those kinds of interests would be entitled to compensation for whatever value they had in the land if, if it's taken. So giving the land trust wouldn't change the value of the land, but if there ever was a taking, when the deposit was made by the state of Connecticut to take the rest of the land outright, some piece of that, which is now owned by the town of Farmington, some piece of that would be a value of the land trust, and they would get some, some money. I, I don't think it's extraordinarily valuable, there's not a huge market out there for, for, you know, exchange of stewardship over land, but it is, it is an easement right in a very large piece of property, so it has some value. So some piece of what, if we, if the property were taken today by the state of Connecticut without the easement, some piece of what would come into the treasury of, of the town, had the easement was in place, some piece of that would go into the treasury of the land trust.
And at this point, we have, the state has put in, in our open space, about four and a half million dollars, so they really have bought into this, the, not ownership, but this ability to have the easements and buy, buy money, actually. I mean, by paying for this and being a partner with us in making sure that the properties are not taken over and are not changed, because the town of Farmington, in, as, as we all know, is, is very, very favorable to open space through the years we've had many votes that, you know, where we've spent, you know, a good deal of money purchasing open space, and to my knowledge, we've never had any problem with, ever, of any of the properties being reverted to anything else. And one of the things I, I wanted to ask you about too, is we always talk about best practice here, sitting at the council. When you look at, and I kind of assume that, that you've told us that because you've said that this hasn't happened, but best practice is through the state with other towns. Is this kind of an easement generally, do you generally see this, or is it more of a license or just a partnership without this kind of an easement?
I've never seen an easement, circumstances like this, in which there's already a conservation easement in place to protect against the property being developed and limiting the use to passive recreation, and that another easement be put on top of that, giving, exchanging, you know, rights of, for stewardship. I have, and I, I've been involved in, a big deal with nature conservancy where they, there was similar, similarly, it was a ridge area, and there was actually rattlesnake habitat, and the nature conservancy was willing to give land to the organization that they were going to get an easement from. So there, there was an exchange of land that was also encumbered by conservation easement, but it was worth it to that organization to give up some development rights in that ridge in order to get the additional property. So usually, these kinds of conservation easements are situations where, you know, there's a benefactor who's willing to give, give land to the town, but he's only going to give it if there is a easement in favor of a land trust, because they want to, you know, they don't want the property developed, and they have a relationship with the land trust and want the land trust to be able to be a steward. So you get the benefactor situation, you have the situation where, where grant monies, you know, there's monies that become available to acquire property, but like with this, this state program, they'll put the money in only if they're assured that it, the property is going to end up in, in, in some kind of stewardship. So I have not, you know, the, the, the language of the document is not uncommon in terms of a conservation easement, but the circumstances, that is not being related to a purchase, not being related to a charitable gift, and not being related to some kind of an exchange for value, but is simply an easement in exchange for actually doing work on the property and inspecting it and giving reports, I haven't seen that, that before.
If, from time to time, the town government has looked into swapping properties, and when it's been advantageous to the, to both sides, when it's, the town needs something for a fire building, or needs something for, just something else in town, but they've always swapped, been able to swap a, a piece of property so that the land never, the number of acres never goes down, you always have those open space acreage, but you've, you've been able to have that cooperative effort to better the town in many ways. If in fact, there is, that conversation would come up with any piece of property, if we have an easement from the land trust, doesn't the land trust then have to agree if they have an easement with this piece, with the, the undertaking as well?
Not exactly, but, but you're, you're on to something there in the sense that you, if you were to transfer the land, you'd transfer it with the easement rights of the land trust. So that might be, that might dissuade the person that might be interested in doing a swap, because they have to take, and, and there's a certain level of control and rights that the land trust will have in, in, in the property, perhaps somebody's not interested in acquiring that land because of, you know, the land trust's interest might be of no concern whatsoever, so that, that, you know, just like a, a real estate purchase where you look at it and you realize somebody has an easement to go through a side of it, "I don't want to buy a piece of property where somebody can put a driveway on the side of my property," somebody else might have no concern with it whatsoever. But the prop, they wouldn't be able to block a swap, but any swap would be subject to their, they would continue to have the rights forever in this land, access and to put signage up, you know, related to the, the land trust having, you know, you, you've seen the document, so that the various rights that the land trust would have would continue regardless of, of another kind of a transfer.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Follow-up question, with the state easement, can we do a land swap on this parcel?
There, there is some provisions in there that as long as, it, it has to be to a single entity, it can't get divided up. I, I was looking at the language, so it is, it is possible to transfer property that is subject to this kind of an easement in, in favor of the state, it's just there's some limitations in terms of who can acquire, and you can't break it all up. It's, it's, it's going to go as a whole, and it's going to be subject to that restriction, that it can't be developed, and it can only be used for passive, passive recreation.
So whoever acquired it would still be subject to the same state obligations?
Yep. The protected property must remain as an entity in a single ownership, and may not be divided, subdivided, partitioned, or otherwise separated into parcels, whether or not said protected property may be described in herein, and then grantor agrees that all the terms, et cetera, et cetera, here are going to apply to a new, a subsequent person who subsequently acts, you know, acquires the property.
Can I just ask a follow-up on that? When we're talking swap, I think there's, sometimes there's two different kinds of swaps that the town has done. We've swapped open space for open space, and the two scenarios that were just described by Nancy and Patty with the state and with the land trust, that's what you were thinking of, is it swapping open space for another piece of open space, correct?
Sure.
Okay, yeah, so we would have to ask permission if, for instance, we were going to swap this piece of property, and this piece of property was not going to be open space anymore, but we maybe had another piece of open space that we were going to purchase or do something else, and then we still have the same amount of open space, but this piece of property may not be open space. So in my mind, I would think you'd have to ask the state, and they would have to agree because they have an easement on that property, thus you'd still, and, which I think would be very difficult in general, but then you'd also, if the state did agree somehow, you'd also have to get permission from the land trust to do that too, because they, the next owner wouldn't have that easement on that property because it no longer necessarily would be open space.
Well, the other, if, if anybody, if what made that land valuable and worthwhile in the sense that there was another piece of open space, or another piece of property that the town could acquire, and they could do that by divesting its interest in, in some or, or all of this property, the, if the land trust easement was put in place, it would be a permanent restriction against development of the property, and so you could never do that deal without the land trust being part of, part of the agreement. But if it was going to continue to be in, in open space, no development, no division, nothing like that, and it was, and someone else was going to manage the, was willing, you know, wanted this land to keep it in open, open space, that's, that's possible. What, what would happen is if, for some reason, if the state ever did, was interested in giving up these development rights, which again, I, I think is extraordinarily low, if the Farmington Land Trust had the easement, they could block a, a deal like that.
Other questions? The license agreement that we did, or was written up, that is one of a partnership with the land trust. So that, as far as stewardship is concerned, that, that is an agreement as far as stewardship and with the land trust, and to work together as a partnership, as, in a partnership with them.
Right.
Without having an easement.
That, that, that is another way that, that an agreement could be, could be, you know, accomplished, that if, perhaps it's good, it's good PR for the land trust to have signage and, and to be stewards of that land so that you partner with them, but you don't give them, you know, the, the development rights, you know, protection against the development rights. I mean, they're, that might be valuable to them, I don't know, but I got this, certainly from the report of Tom Major Egan, that, that they didn't seem to be interested in something that was less than a permanent interest in the land, but that there are all kinds of alternatives that are less than a permanent interest in the land that, that could involve a partnership. So some of the same stewardship could happen in an agreement that doesn't include giving them a permanent interest in the development rights of the land. I think one of the most, you know, it's a hedge, it would seem to me if I, you know, from working with land trusts and knowing the interest of land trusts, one thing that document does for them was to create a hedge that in that extraordinarily unlikely event that the state of Connecticut ever was going to change course in terms of that, that it would assure that this would never be developed. And, you know, I, I think that is, again, extraordinarily low, but that's, you know, that's one thing it, it would do.
Other questions, comments?
See, none, if you, and obviously, any follow-ups, if people think of anything that we can help with after, after we digest this anymore, certainly we'll work with the town manager in answering any additional questions, but glad to be here, and I really appreciate the moment of silence you did earlier this evening.
Thank you. Anything else to ask or that you want any information on?
What are the next steps? What are we doing next as a council?
I think we need to decide what we want to do as a council, whether we want to move forward with talking about the easement as, bringing that back as, as more than just in the report, or whether we feel we're comfortable with the way, well, people, how people feel about having an easement or not, so, or whether we think a license is something, or an easement, or what we want to do with this. So, go ahead.
I can start by saying I know that two members of the land trust have told me they are not interested in a license agreement, which probably means that's not an option moving forward. One of them was Richard Kramer, who I believe is the president, so I'm assuming he's getting that from the board, that's an assumption on my part. I, based on what I've heard today, in particular, the last statements Ken made about it being an extraordinarily low likelihood that the state would ever give up its development rights, I don't see the town as giving up a lot of rights by giving this easement to the Farmington Land Trust. I see there being an advantage of stewardship and maintaining the open space land, which frankly, town staff, my understanding, does not have the time to do. It's, at this point, everybody has their own roles and tasks, and I think it's important if the town's going to continue to acquire open space, that the open space be maintained in some way. And I think there's an advantage to having the Farmington Land Trust take on the role of stewards in this particular property, where frankly, my, unless I'm misunderstanding, seems to be a relatively low risk to the town, and it's not really giving up a lot at this point in time to do that. I will also say that I've heard from, since our last meeting, I know there were people, I think it was our July meeting, there were members of the public in the audience who have since reached out to me and says, "It seems to me like a no-brainer, the town should be signing this agreement." So there's also, I know that there is, I appreciate that's a handful of people, and it does not reflect the full population of town, but I have to go with the people who actually reach out to me as opposed to guessing. So in my mind, this seems, I am in favor of moving forward with an easement.
I have to add to, just with your comment about people reaching out and saying that they're in support of, I've had a number of people come up to me and say that the town bought the property, and the town... bought the property, and the town's citizens bought the property and paid for the property, and they do not want to give up control to anybody except for the town. And the council is an elected body, and as such, the council is subject to the citizens and the population in town that we, that either moves forward or doesn't move forward the dollars for open space, and, and just in the future, if something goes on that we, that's their opportunity either to keep people in, in office or not, and that they feel that's, it was done by the council for the town, for the citizens, and purchasing that, and they're concerned about giving up the control. So I guess, you know, you hear both sides of that with the control. My thought is also with the best practice piece is that it doesn't seem as though this is something that's common at all. In fact, rare, rarely done. So I, I think that we have a good relationship with the land trust, and we can certainly continue to be partners with them in many ways. But my concern is, is the citizens I heard from that are concerned about giving up control, if in fact, any liability issue does come about, where that leaves, leaves the town, and that they're concerned about that. So that's.
Can I ask you a question, Nancy?
Sure.
The control, because in my, and I think this is, I'm trying to understand, in my mind, the state's the one with control right now as opposed to the town. So what's the town's control over this property?
If we decide, if we want to clean up the property, if we can't afford to clean up a spot on the property, that is the town's decision to make, or whether we have the funds or the manpower. My concern is that if we are subject to the paperwork, that we need to be doing X, Y, Z, and we don't, where does that leave us? That's a, that's a concern I have.
The liability.
Other comments?
Yeah, and I, I think I, I also had people outreach to me as well, probably a mix of some people were in favor and some people weren't. The one thing that kept on resonating with some of the folks that I've heard from was that the land trust is a private entity, and that this property was purchased with town money, it was voted on on behalf of the town by the council to purchase this property. I appreciate, I would like to have more of a partnership with the land trust committee because I do support open space, but sitting back thinking about putting another easement on a property that was purchased by town residents' money, our tax dollars, and a private entity wanting to do something, which is great, very slim chance of liability risk, but there, there is now putting us on notice. I know it's a far-fetched example of eminent domain, but that could exist, but it's far-fetched, where this private entity, if that were to happen, could get compensated. But it's also far-fetched that we could swap it and develop it because the state has an easement. So I feel like we could be arguing about land trusts having an easement and having some type of control. I think at the end of the day, the state has final say, and I guess the president's. I haven't seen the town, unless Kathy Kotelis swapped property that was designated with open space, and the townspeople were upset with that swap. So I'm, I appreciate what the land trust wants to do, but I wish it was more of a partnership. And just for the mere fact that it is a private entity, we are elected officials, I think that if we were going to purchase a property in the future, then maybe we should put that statement in there saying, hey, we're going to work with the land trust, and we're also going to have an easement on it, and let the voters decide. But I think at this point, I feel like it's somewhat premature because there was no precedent. And again, I'm looking to you, Kathy, to confirm that if there was something, a scenario like that in the town, that we did swap land and should have been open space, and people were upset about it, I just want to highlight those things just because I just know that we should be able to have a partnership with the land trust. But giving them full rights over what the elected bodies of us sitting up here today, but 100 years from now, what, what would that body look like?
Right. And I don't, you know, again, do I remember anything where there was a huge outcry because we swapped property? No. You know, but again, I'll just give you an example, though. We had to swap property for the Westwoods for the fire station. Now, I can't remember, I don't remember a packed house, but could you say that maybe someone that lived next door there was not thrilled that we were doing that as a town? I would say, you know, that probably could have happened. We swapped property to do the burn building that we now do. Overwhelmingly, people were in favor of that. I think overwhelmingly, people were in favor of having a firehouse in that location. Can I say that every single person maybe did not? No. You know, if you lived right next door, maybe you weren't 100% thrilled, but I don't remember, definitely not for the burn building because that was much more recent, having a packed full of people saying that they didn't think that was a good swap of land.
But we left the rights to the public to say how they felt.
Well, it was in a town council type of.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Other comments?
Just quickly, I guess, I don't want to beat a dead horse. I had a lot of people come up to me and say that they were not in favor of this. Listening to everything, a lot of good questions, it's not disputable, there are some pros to doing it. I also think there's quite a few cons. To me, I think the downside today outweighs the upside. Should we not go forward with it? There's nothing limiting us from doing it down the road, should the pros ever outweigh the cons in a future town council's mind, or even our minds. If we do go forward with this today, and it's clear that the cons outweigh the pros, I don't think we can undo that. That's pretty permanent. So unless it's an absolute no-brainer, I would be very cautious about us going down this path now. I'd be more hesitant to slow the process down at least and think it through, personally.
Other comments?
I think really what it comes down to, and given that we heard from the attorney, low risk, I think the value or the, the goal on part of the land trust and perhaps some residents who feel very strongly about open space is the guarantee that this, by doing this easement, it puts it out for generations, for many, many years. And for some people, that's what they want with open space. And then the other set of opinions might be, we want the flexibility. We own that land, the town owns that land and has, you know, primary responsibility for it, and if that allows for some flexibility down the road. So that's what, I think, the way I see it, that's what we're weighing here, the long-term protecting that as open space, or keeping the town with some flexibility because down the road, there may be some other options that the residents or the, the people in elected office want to see happen. But I think the decision's kind of before us now, and I'm not sure if we'll get the chance down the road. I suppose it's possible, it's possible for anyone to bring it up again, whether it's with the land trust or with the council, but I just think that's what it comes down to in terms of what is your priority? Where are you going to make your decision? Just as far as how I feel after the presentation tonight, I'm not sure there's that many benefits that would come from the easement, and it comes with some concerns, but I really can see both sides and the value to that. I think people value, we know that people value, residents value, open space in this community, and they may be looking for us to do what we can to protect it in the long term.
Thank you. I think, just one comment about, if I thought for a minute that we were jeopardizing our open space, I would, I'd have to say I'd be the first one to be signing an easement. I don't think in this town we've, we've had that problem. In fact, we know, the community and the town councils know, show how important open space is, and we, we have not had any problem with that or reversals. So honestly, personally, if I felt that was in jeopardy, I would be, be looking forward to doing this. I don't think that's in jeopardy at all here. I think with the state, where they are and us, I just, I don't see that, that happening and needing this extra layer as a reason to do this.
Other comments? CJ?
It's been interesting listening to a lot of the comments. I, I would disagree with Beth on the long-term, short-term. I think we do have a good long-term protection here. I think the town has shown that, but I, I also don't see the tremendous benefit of the easement here. The precedent potential worries me that we're giving up rights to a property that, that does have real value, whether it comes in as dollars and cents, but we as a council have taken a property that has real value, and we're giving up some of the rights to that. I don't say that expecting that we're ever going to sell those rights or make money off this, because again, Bruce's scenario where there's eminent domain is fairly slim, but then again, anything could happen, as, as we heard, it could happen, that the state gives up their rights to all these properties, something also not likely to happen. But giving up a real value that the, the council and the town took in, I think does give up a little bit of our responsibility. I appreciate Patty's question about the, the maintenance, and the low expectations are good, but it's, it does seem like there's not a tremendous added liability to having the land trust service the land. It doesn't seem like that will give us a huge added liability, so I appreciate hearing that as well. But the, as far as the long-term, I think the town has shown again and again in voting for funds to buy more open space, that that's very important to the residents. I think the, the limits on here as far as long-term, the state isn't likely to give up those limits, so I think we do have good long-term protection on these, so I feel comfortable with that. I appreciate the land trust coming in and offering to work with us on this. I'd be happier if we could have some type of licensing agreement with them where we weren't giving up what I felt was a value to the town to a private entity. Because when we go down the road, one of the things the land trust said to us when they came in is, we don't know who will be on the council in the future and how they feel about these properties, and what, you know, what they're going to want to do with open space. But we can ask the same thing to the land trust. We don't know who's going to be running the land trust and what they're going to maybe put forth that they feel we should be doing to this land, or if there was a situation where there was a positive swap for the town, and the entire town agreed with it, but the land trust was against it, now we're kind of in a hole, so we don't know who's going to be on this volunteer organization either. So we can kind of turn their argument right back on them. But, you know, land trust has done a great job in town. They do a tremendous job acquiring properties, they do a tremendous job maintaining the properties, and I love seeing them go forward, and I fully support them on that. I just don't see the town benefiting from giving up the addition on this. I think the state restrictions are fine, so I would be against at this point in time.
Other, Edward?
Thank you. Yeah, I certainly support open space in this town, and I think the majority, if not everybody here, supports open space in this town, including the public. And I certainly appreciate everything that the land trust has done for this town, they've been an asset to this town. One thing that's been brought up by multiple members of the town council here that I have a tough time dealing, thinking about is that situation of, unlikely situation of eminent domain, and if there was an easement to the land trust, that they would get some sort of compensation of a piece of land that the taxpayers originally paid for. That being said, though, Ken, I appreciate you answering all our questions here tonight. I think this was very informative, and I think I'd like to digest the information a little bit more, and like you said, if any of us have any additional follow-up questions, have that opportunity to, to approach you with that as well.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Well, I'd like to, what I had hoped to, to get was some direction at this point, and you can let me know what you think, I mean, of some consensus of whether we move forward with this right now, or just let it digest as, as you're saying, and if there are any other questions that come up, we can certainly let you know, but, but as far as, I seem to be hearing, but I'll let everybody say, a consensus of not to move forward with this right away. So.
That's what I'm hearing.
Okay. Is that, okay.
Can we have a clarification, not to move forward, meaning that?
We're not going to have this as an agenda.
Agenda, okay.
There. If anybody has any follow-ups, we can certainly reach out, but it's, it's going to be put to rest at this time.
Okay.
Nancy?
Yes.
I have a land acquisition meeting on Thursday, and I expect two members of the land trust to be there. Can I, I'll share that with them?
Oh, sure. Sure, sure. And I think one of the things you can share, I think everybody sitting at this table has expressed an interest with appreciation to the land trust and, you know, wanting to work together as we have in the past and work, move forward with working with the land trust with properties. And we all share that, as was mentioned, that value we see in open space as much as our constituency in town does our citizens do, and we're, that's very clear. So we appreciate it and thank them. And thank you, Ken, for all your work, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Yes. I would, I move to add as N9 to change the voting members of the Farmington Village Center Committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. And we'll see this under N9. At this time, I'd like to ask for any public comment, if, just please come to the podium and say, state your name and your address.
Jay Bombara, 13 Mountain Road, again. Just out of curiosity, after hearing that very thoughtful presentation by the town attorney and your thoughtful deliberations on the land trust easement issue, does the town, or is the town, or is there some group that is going to be responsible for the maintenance? That's 90 acres, that's a lot of property, there are a lot of things that can go on there. You can have people camping there, you can have people living there, but is there going to be, or is there already in place some sort of a process for that to be monitored, or other properties for that matter that the town may own, to ensure that there aren't problems? You were about to get, and again, I'm not questioning your decision, you were about to get a volunteer group to agree to basically be your eyes and ears, but now it's going to have to be the town that's the eyes and ears, so I would just ask that you think about that. Thanks.
Thank you. Other public comment? Okay. Reading of the minutes.
I move to approve the July 10, 2018, regular town council meeting.
Second.
Any corrections or changes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Reading of communications, Kathy.
You would just have four that's in your packet?
Yukon Health, no report at this time. Land Acquisition?
Land Acquisition, last met in July. We are sending out lists, sending out letters to property owners on the land, that own the property on the land acquisition list to find out if, if they're interested in entering into discussions. Those letters should be going out in the next few weeks, or hopefully in the next week and a half or so. And our next meeting is this Thursday, the 13th, at 5:00 here in Town Hall, but upstairs.
Thank you. Green efforts?
Green efforts committee met last night. It was a productive meeting, and we were discussing primarily the goals for green efforts through 2020, and after some brainstorming and discussions, the group decided that, that instead of trying to focus on multiple different environmental initiatives, it would make sense to narrow it down to one main focus to actually be able to accomplish some good, and the focus for the near future at least will be waste reduction, assisting in three separate groups, assisting businesses, schools, and residents in creating a combination of education initiatives perhaps, and, or a green effort seal of approval. We're still in the, working out what the actual programs are gonna be, but our focus is gonna be on encouraging people to reduce waste in those three areas. And the next meeting will be to really get our game plan focused on, on the business component of that, and the next meeting is October 2nd at 6:30 here in Town Council Chambers. Did I say October 2nd?
Thank you. The FHS Ad-Hoc Committee Survey Committee.
So, the survey committee has been very busy as well. We hit the ground running for the summer, and a consultant has been hired to work with the committee to create and then conduct the survey. That decision was made just last week, and so the firm is the Center for Research and Public Policy. Our next meeting is tomorrow, 6:00 PM, in the Board of Ed Conference Room upstairs in Town Hall. We've also scheduled September 20th and September 27th, and our goal is to finish creating the survey, writing the questions, finalizing those by the end of September. It's a pretty aggressive timeline, but we spoke with the consultant today, and we think it's doable. And then the survey would actually be conducted, or can go out into the, into the community in October. And this is going to be a survey, I just wanted to emphasize, of a random sample of residents, so not everyone will be surveyed, but it will be done in the right way to reflect all of Farmington residents, and we should be looking at results in November. And we're gonna be reviewing the findings and sharing those with Town Council, Board of Education, the public, I would say through January. That was our regular, our initial timeline. That's where we're at.
Okay, thank you. The Facility and Financial Committee of Farmington High School.
Yes, the Facility and Financial Committee has held two meetings so far. The first meeting in July, we had a presentation from the Town Finance Director, Joe Swetki, on town finances, including existing debt service and expected debt service based on the five-year CIP. Additional information was requested, including a working financial model where we can adjust variables and view the impact on those results. The second meeting, held in August, was held at the FHS Library. The school board gave a presentation on the statement of needs for the high school. At the next meeting, the school board will provide a one-page document that highlights the statement of needs in a concise and easy-to-understand format. And this will be an informative document that we can make available at Town Hall, at the Farmington Public Library, the Senior Center, the town website, and then any other places that we feel needed in order to help educate the public on what are the needs of the high school. Because I think after last year's referendum, we received a lot of feedback from the public that many people felt like they didn't understand what was wrong with the high school, or felt like they didn't have all the information, and even though the information was publicly available, we want to be as proactive as possible this time around to make sure that the public is educated on the needs of the Farmington High School. We can't expect the public to make a decision on the cost of a project if they don't fully understand the needs for the project in the first place. And the next meeting of the committee will be held on September 18th at 7:00 PM, also at the FHS Library.
Okay, thank you. Farmington Village Center Committee.
Yes, we actually was busy this summer as well, so we met a couple times, and essentially, our last meeting, we had a presentation from our town planner to kind of go through what the outcome of all the shirets that happened. It's been over four years, so it's really kind of reminding all the residents of what those results were. It was a packed house, there was only standing room. A lot of comments, we had open comments twice during that session. The majority of the comments were, they had some favorable comments, but also there was comments concerned about the environmental concerns, as well as what's going to be developed there, is it gonna, you know, what is it gonna look like? Is it gonna be two stories, three stories? Zoning concerns. So we took all those questions. We also educated the public that we've created an FAQ document that's out on our website, so residents that weren't available for that meeting and wanted to know what type of questions that were asked, we have a Q&amp;A document that will be posted on our Farmington website under the Government section, and look for the Farmington Village Center. So the next steps for that committee was to move forward in, in really trying to get a better understanding of what those environmental concerns, as well as preparing a report for our next meeting and what we uncover. Our next meeting is September 17th, which will be here in the Town Hall, and then we'll have another meeting to educate the rest of the council on October 23rd, so we, I believe it's a double meeting for us, right? Yes. We also had an ad hoc committee for quality of life, so this was a subcommittee of the Farmington Village Committee. We asked for volunteers to really get involved and walk with the town manager Kathy Egan to kind of look at some of the concerns that we've been hearing about the Parsons property and some of the development in the area. There was a lot of weeds growing, some of the trees were dying, so this subcommittee also gave us a report on their findings and recommendations of what Kathy had to do to go back to the state of Connecticut to report those findings. So, so we're gonna see some improvements with that as well. Did I miss anything, guys?
No, but I think maybe the only other thing, Bruce, that I think people may have an interest that also the Quality of Life Subcommittee is also gonna be looking at the whole area?
Yes, so the whole area that designated, so, so just as a reminder, the designated area starts from the corner of Four, where the bridge is, going over to the bridge, all the way up to, not Mountain Spring, is it? Mountain Spring Road, down Route 10 to Scott Swamp Road and Main Street in that corner. So all of Main Street, from Mountain Springs Road to the bridge crossing over towards, heading towards Unionville. They're gonna be looking at quality of life concerns and improving that area.
Thank you. Okay. Report of the council chair and liaisons, chair report. I just want to report that we did meet, the Farmington Valley Collaborative met this week, and one of the things that we have, we did talk about at length, and we're gonna talk about it our next meeting, is shared services. What kinds of things we can do with each other, we, it's not the first time we've had this conversation, but there are some difficulties towns are finding in having, hiring people and getting people to, in certain positions to apply for jobs, so we're gonna be talking more about different things that are possible to, working together and sharing with one another, so. Board of Education, Beth?
Yes. So the Board of Education last met August 27th, which was also the first day of school. There were recognitions for Staff Member of the Year for 2019. That award went to Jean Latornau. He's the head custodian at Westwood's Upper Elementary School. They also recognized Farmington Police Officer Stan Latta, who is moving, staying with the Farmington Police, but moving from his position as a school resource officer that he's held since 2013. And the 2019 Teacher of the Year was given to Kimberly Miller. That's just in Farmington, so Farmington Teacher of the Year. She's a math teacher at Irving Robbins Middle School. They talked about several of the facility projects that we're pretty familiar with that happened this summer, those went well, and right down to the wire, I can say, as a Noah Wallace parent, but things definitely were accomplished. And their next meeting is September 17th at the Farmington High School and the Library.
Okay, thank you. Chamber of Commerce.
No report.
EDC.
Yes, the EDC is hosting another, one of their breakfast series on September 26th from 7:45 AM until 9:30 AM. Again, this is generously sponsored by Farmington Bank. And the speaker is gonna be Dr. James Lombella, President of Tuxus and S. Nuntuck Community College. Dr. Lombella will unveil plans for the new $750,000 Advanced Manufacturing Technology Center and the Advanced Manufacturing Program established this fall at Tuxus Community College. Partnering with manufacturers and modeled after the successful program at S. Nuntuck Community College, Dr. Lombella will share how this program will train the next generation of skilled manufacturers and allow the manufacturing sector to fill 14,000 manufacturing job openings currently available throughout the state of Connecticut. Dr. Lombella is a proud first-generation community college graduate who holds a Master's of Management degree from Cambridge College and a Doctor of Education at the Abraham S. Philshire of Education at Nova Southeastern University.
Thank you. Farmington Historical District Commission.
Nothing to report.
Housing Authority.
Nothing much to report, except that their next meeting is Wednesday, October 10th, and that's being held at the Staples House at 6:15.
Human Relations?
And their next meeting is Wednesday, September 26th, 6:30. It's their annual meeting, and they hold that at New Horizons Village in Unionville.
Library Board?
Library Board did not meet in August, but their next meeting is September 19th. Nothing else to report.
TPZ?
They're actually meeting tomorrow, so nothing new to report, but their meeting, just to remind folks, their meeting was changed from Monday to Wednesday due to the holiday.
Unionville Historic District Commission.
Yeah, just to mention this again, it was part of our reading of communications and written appeals. There's an invitation, the public's invited on September 30th at, from 2:00 PM until 4:30 PM to a tour of the historic Unionville properties hosted by the Unionville Historic District and Properties Commission. The tour is free, and anybody in the public that's interested in registering can do so on tourunionville eventbrite.com. The tour's gonna take place rain or shine, and it's gonna feature a guided tour through the district, as well as interiors of four houses. Owners of the highlighted houses will talk about the history, preservation, and renovations made to their homes. The event will conclude with refreshments at the Norman Gridley House located on the banks of the Farmington River. And then the highlighted houses of this tour are the Daniel Johnson House, built in 1844, the Frank Sanford House, 1884, the George and Edward Thompson House, 1884, and the Norman Gridley House, 1889.
Thank you. Thanks. WPCA?
The sewage treatment project is going well, still on good schedule, and we are meeting tomorrow, the Town Council, or at the Town Hall.
Okay, thank you. Oh, sorry. UVIA?
UVIA has, is, co-sponsoring may be too strong a word, but is assisting with the Fall Festival that's being sponsored by the town and co-sponsored by UVIA, October 21st. This, and there'll be a community movie that night at 6:30, I believe, the showing The Great Pumpkin Charlie Brown at the Staples House. As a reminder, the Unionville Festival will not, is not occurring this year due to, in part due to a lack of volunteers from last year's festival. It just takes a lot of work to put it on, and UVIA is continuing to look for volunteers, so if anyone wants to volunteer, please reach out to Tim LeBoutier or anyone else, or me, or anyone else on UVIA.
Thank you. Any other liaison reports? Okay. Report of the town manager, Kathy.
The first item is just that our next meeting, our September 25th meeting, is going to be held at Ms. Porter's School. So the meeting, if you are interested, Ms. Porter says graciously invited the town council for dinner at 6:00 PM, and then at 7:00 will be our meeting. So details of the meeting location and the campus, where to meet, will be to follow, but we've done that in the past, and it will be really just an open meeting that you guys can go back and forth and just have some dialogue between Ms. Porter's and the town council. The next item is the expansion of the Riverside Cemetery. If you remember, on our goals, Town Manager Goal Eight is to work with the Farmington Cemetery Committee to identify land that would be suitable for the expansion of the Riverside Cemetery and present a report, including options, to the town council. The town and the cemetery have been working for years now to find suitable land. Over the past couple of years, efforts concentrated on the property at 124 Scott Swamp Road, which is owned by the state of Connecticut. Multiple efforts to acquire that property through conveyance, sale, or swap did not result in a favorable result for the town of Farmington. As a result, you all directed me to present new options for suitable land to the town council. We evaluated over 15 properties, both town-owned land and privately-owned land, that had approximately eight to 12 usable acres that would be suitable for cemetery use. I've created, as you can see, a condensed list of what we felt were maybe suitable properties for consideration by the town council. The table below outlines each property and provides, you know, a brief description of the limitations of the property. The first one is the Tinty Park Property. This is on Main Street, there's nine acres, it is town-owned. The acreage is on the small side, it does have good access, and it does a potential to mix with public use of the property with the preservation of the barn. There is a barn on, a historic barn on that property that we thought maybe that could be incorporated into something with the cemetery. This is a site that we have never thought of possibly of having as a cemetery, but when we were going through on the mapping of it, it did seem like that there was some potential there. It is off of Main Street, there is access in, the back has the river, that we would still have like maybe a walking trail or something that would go along that with the thought of that. So again, something to think about. It was, it has not been a property that really we've talked about with the Cemetery Association or with the staff, but when we were going through, we actually just had the map and looked at every piece of property, and that was one that came, came about. The Hind Farm, we've talked about with the Cemetery Association, it was one of the properties that they thought we should consider. It's 11 acres, it's town-owned, the acreage and the access is good, but it is currently being farmed. The Krell Farm is the eastern portion along Judson Lane, that's eight acres, it's town-owned. The acreage is somewhat small, there's some possible wetlands. It's good access, but it's complicated with the school, and the current owner has life use to the property, so again, not 100% ideal. Moraya Road, 8518, this is a privately-owned piece of land that's on the land acquisition list. The acreage and the access is good. The location's on the far side of town, whereas the Cemetery Association's preference is on the eastern side or central portion. Area may be limited by wetlands and slope, and also, it's privately-owned, we would have to buy it. The Bland Property, 11 acres, is privately-owned, the acreage and access is good, the possibility is limited by wetlands, and the property is currently farmed and adjacent to the property. to the Hind Farm. So we would, would have to buy that piece of property. So where we are right now is that we really have gone through every piece of open space with the Cemetery Association that we could find, except for this Tinty property. That really was never part of the, the open space that we had discussed with them in the past. We looked at all the property. Most of our property has a state, a lot of our property has the state easements on it, which then doesn't allow us to have a cemetery on it. So that's why a lot of the property is already taken off. A lot of our property is farmed by farmers that have farmed it for a really long time, so we took those pieces of property off. If I remember correctly, the properties that the Cemetery Association a year or two back had on their top was our state property, which we just talked about, which we have not been able to make any headway. This Hind Farm was one of their top pieces, and the other property was at the Westwoods Golf Course, a section of that, but we have researched that some more, and that property's encumbered with easements on it, too. So I don't think that property, and that property at the staffing level, we were not that crazy about that property anyway, but it doesn't, that doesn't really matter because of the easements. So these are the other properties. Obviously, we stayed away from properties when we researched it that are on the, that are commercial properties, because there are a few commercial properties in town that are vacant that are in that acreage, but we didn't feel that it was appropriate to take commercial land off the tax rolls, so we didn't do that. So we basically looked at open space property that we already owned, other property that possibly was on the land acquisition list, and a few other properties if we saw them, just to see if it worked out. But some of them didn't have good access, some of them had wetlands. So as you know, we really do not have that much land available in Farmington as is. So this is, there's not, you know, this is, I think, really pretty close to the condensed version of what, what we have to choose from. So, you know, I'm looking for some next steps, and I don't, I'm, again, not saying we have to have a committee committee, but maybe a working group if someone wanted to volunteer with me to work with the Cemetery Association, one or two people, just to talk your initial reaction to some of this and, you know, just to keep things moving. You know, the Cemetery Association was here a few months ago, and they are anxious about it, so this is, you know, a starting point for the council.
Any comments? Go ahead, Kathy.
Kathy, I frankly, the Tinty Park looks to be in a good part of town and ideally located in the parcels of, maybe, I think you said, a little small. But my understanding is that land was gifted to the town. Were there any restrictions on the use or what it was supposed to be used for when it was gifted to the town?
No, there's no formal requirements on it, but I did work with Mr. Tinty quite a bit about some of the things that he was interested in. We do have a plan, a conceptual plan, that eventually there would be, thought that possibly we would be using that for some sort of recreational facility. But that said, Mr. Tinty was never really that hot and heavy of a big recreational facility, meaning more fields and things like that, even though he, he said that he would understand if we did that, but he really was very strong that he wanted walking trails and things that would show the river. And that was, even in our conceptual plans now that show the fields on it, you can see that there's all walking trails in the back, and the walking trails along the river actually connect, you can connect to, because I think there's open space land that I think the Land Trust has, and that would be a nice pathway. So my feeling with knowing Mr. Tinty and some of the things that he wanted, I think that having it being preserved and maybe having some walking space and having the historic barn being restored and some different things like that, I think would be right up something that he would like, he would like, or would have liked.
Good night. Go ahead.
How many acres is the Garden Street Cemetery?
The what cemetery?
The cemetery on Garden Street.
Right now?
Yeah.
I don't know the answer to that. Yeah, I'm not sure.
I don't think it's that much bigger than nine acres, really.
I can find out. I just don't know it off the top of my head.
I would be willing to, this is, because this is a new property, the Tinty Park on it, and it seems to be, when Kathy talked about it, it seems to be something that is a real good possibility. I'd be willing to work as a, with the Cemetery Committee, see if we could meet and talk about this with Kathy or whoever we think needs to be a part of this, and just get a, see what their feeling is with this piece, and come back with some conversation, you know, and talk about it, or have them come if they, if they so desire. So. Is that, if anyone, if you're okay with that, if anybody else wants to do it, that's okay.
I'm fine with you doing it.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Kathy, then I'll, I'll set up a meeting with, with them, and we can talk about this and see what their thoughts are.
And, you know, we haven't studied it that much, but, you know, when we did go through it, Liz Dolphin and I, we did go through it, and we've been working, we really kind of liked the, the Tinty property, to be honest. I thought, you know, in first blush, it really seems like it could be potential, you know, obviously take a long time before it became a cemetery, and if we could work something out to get the barn, historic barn, and maybe partnership with them, and there's the parking lot, and the river's back there, I don't know, we, we thought it was a real good option to explore, so, anyway.
As you said, Patty, the location is great. I mean, it's more the center of town, you know, so.
Okay, but it hasn't, you know, been vetted other than that.
Right, right.
Just so you know, there's a State of Connecticut Department of Transportation, Route Four Transportation Safety Improvement Study Meeting on September 26, 2018, 5:30 p.m. at the Farmington Community and Senior Center. If you may remember that there was a CROG study done, and it's called the Transportation Safety Improvement Study. They're having a public hearing on it. The study area includes all intersections along the Route Four corridor from the Jug Handle to Talkeet Knatch Road, all intersections along South Road from Route Four to the four-way stop at Colt Highway, an intersection along Colt Highway, Route Six, from South Road to Birdseye Road, and all intersections along Mudson Road from South Road to Middle Road. So if you're interested in attending, they are having a public hearing on it, and they're going to just go through the study and what some of the recommendations of the study are. And that takes us to, the study was done back in 2016, and about a year ago, the town staff became aware of a Connecticut Connectivity Grant, and we basically applied for a grant on projects that were in that study. And a year later, we were just recently notified that we were, we received $374,250 for the implementation of part of this study grant. And what we were awarded was to update the ADA ramps, install upgraded crosswalks and pedestrian signals at the intersection of South Road and Birdseye Road at the northwest, southeast, and southwest corners. This work will include adding an exclusive pedestrian phase to the signal. We were also awarded to update ADA ramps, install upgraded crosswalks and pedestrian signals at the intersection of Farmington Avenue and Farm Glen Boulevard at the northwest and northeast and southeast corners. The work will include adding an exclusive pedestrian phase to the signal. And three, we were awarded construction of a sidewalk in front of 1 and 3 Farm Glen Boulevard to connect from the intersection of Farm Glen Boulevard to the existing sidewalk to the east along Farmington Avenue, and pedestrians regularly walk along the edge of the road in this area. We were also, part of the grant was the continuation of the existing sidewalk at 499 Farmington Avenue to provide direct access to the building from the intersection of South Road at Birdseye Road, and then also create a pedestrian sidewalk from Middle Road to the southwest corner of the lot containing the two medical buildings located at 11 and 21 South Road. Patients, employees, and visitors frequently use this area as a cut-through when walking this building from the Yukon Health Center. There was maps included that show, and that's all part of the study that I just talked about before. So we were really very, very surprised that, because it took a year before we got notified that we got the grant. Jackson Labs and Yukon are thrilled about the grant. Metro and Sager, we worked with them, and they helped us. It was really a very extensive grant to come across with these different things, and Shannon, who's here, really participated in that grant process. Bruce Seer and the Town Planning and Zoning, and Kat in my office prepared this grant, and we couldn't be happier about getting, you know, a $374,000 grant for these items. So.
Well, that's wonderful. Thank you very much, and thank you for, for the grant. This is, this'll be great.
You also have in your book your strategic plan, and hopefully, if all is well, there is hole punches in them, so if you could just add, take that out and put it in your book that you got when you guys all started, and this is your new book, so just take out the old book and put in the new book. And lastly, we're getting there, Nutmeg. We, we keep on being told that we're ready for live streaming, but on September 4th, we received an email saying that they had some things that they had to do at tonight's meeting, and they were going to do an internal test, which my understanding, that was done tonight, and we are hopefully confident that we're going to start on October 9th. But we keep on pushing, and Nutmeg has assured us that they are going to have us be live streaming on October 9th, our next town council meeting.
Great. And I have a motion to accept the Town Manager Report.
I move to approve the Town Manager's Report. Second.
Any questions?
Just one quick question. Kathy, regarding the Connectivity Grant, that's exciting news. We're getting a lot of sidewalks put in place. In terms of the liability in maintaining it, are the business owners are going to be taking care of that, or who's gonna, usually private residents take care of it. I just want to make sure that, is it the business that will be shoveling it in the winter?
Yes, they will. And the stakeholders involved were part of the, the grant process. They actually issued letters of support that were included in the grant.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Great. Anything else? Yes?
Madam Chair. Kathy, I appreciate all the communications you've been having with DOT recently on Route Four. One of the, and it's this public information meeting that's made me think of it, which I will not be able to attend because it's also curriculum night at Irving Robbins, I think, that night. I can't remember which school. I have to be at a school. One of the questions I have is, has it ever been explored with the state about marking intersections for "Don't Block the Box"? Because I understand there is a statute in place that we can, as a town, pass an ordinance saying, "Don't block the box." We can paint out the intersection, and that's when our police officers would actually be able to ticket the cars if they block the box in the intersection. And I do know that there is a lot of frustration, especially at High Street, that cars are blocking the intersection instead of, when the light turns yellow, they're going through and blocking the intersection. My also, my other understanding is that because it's a state road, we have to get approval from DOT to do that. So has there ever been any discussion with DOT about that concept?
We have had conversations internally about "Don't Block the Box" a few times internally with the chief, and we have, I think we have created actually some different things that we could do to get "Don't Block the Box." So I, and I'm not sure if we've had conversations with the state about it, but we have done quite a lot of work on this topic, but I can't remember it off the top of my head. So let me get back to you about the whole "Don't Block the Box," and I can put it on the next agenda, because there is quite a bit of research and things we've done about it, but I can't remember it off the top of my head.
Thank you. That's all.
Can I add on to Patty's?
Yes.
I'm not as familiar with "Don't Block the Box." I have seen them, but in that scenario that Patty just described, coming out of High Street, you know, I think we all could be in a situation where you think that you can make it through, but the traffic is backing up. Just as you do your research, I'm just curious, how does that work? Like, if someone did go out there, and then all of a sudden the traffic did stop, but they thought they could make it through?
My understanding is that you have to line it, and we have to, I think, have a town ordinance about "Don't Block the Box," and I think we've created actually a draft town ordinance about it. And so, again, there's a big thing, we've talked about it many times in Unionville about "Don't Block the Box," but then we've also talked about it on the 84 Interstate coming out, coming down there. And that is a state road, so that brings in the state area. So there's a whole bunch of different things that go with it, but the, the theory is, is that when you're in that, then the police officer, if you have a town ordinance that says you can't block the box on town roads at least, you could be issued a ticket. Then I think what happens if, on state roads, you have to get permission to put "Do Not Box the Box," and then I think you can get tickets there. But there is a funky thing that goes with "Do Not Box, Block the Box," is that if you're making a turn, it's a whole different thing. It's, so if you're going through the intersection, and you get, like, on the 84, and you get stuck in the middle because cars are in front of you, I think that's a true "Don't Block the Box," and then you can get a ticket. But in, like, Unionville, when you're making a left-hand turn onto New Britton Avenue, like, if you're heading to the police station, and you're making that turn and you get blocked there, there's a different rule because of a turn. So there's a bunch of different things that go with it, so I will find out.
Sure.
And get back to you.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor of Kathy's reports, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay, appointments.
Yes, Madam Chair. This is Agenda Item L4. I move that Robert Hannan to be reappointment, reappointed to the Conservation and Inland Wetland Commission as a member of four-year term, beginning immediately and ending September 30th of 2022.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
Agenda Item L5. I move that Ned Stanchion to be reappointed to the Conservation and Inland Wetland Commission as a member of four-years term, beginning immediately and ending September 30th of 2022.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
Madam Chair, Agenda Item L7. I move that Brian Connolly to be reappointed to the Economic Development Commission as a member of a two-year term, beginning immediately and ending September 30th of 2020.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
Madam Chair, Agenda Item L8. I move that John Koralsky to be reappointed to the Economic Development Commission as a member of, a member for, for a two-year term, beginning immediately and ending September 30th of 2020.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
Madam Chair, Agenda Item L9. I move that Jay Tulen be appointed to the Human Relation Commission for a balance of two-years term, beginning immediately and ending June 30th of 2020.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
Madam Chair, Agenda Item L20. I move that Ruth Grobe be appointed to the Human Relation Committee, to be appointed as a Human Relations Committee slash Universal Design Associate for the Farmington Village Center Committee for an indefinite term.
Second.
All the, any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay. Okay, old business. New business. One.
I move to amend the Farmington Town Code, Chapter 111, Historic Areas, by including the addition of four properties to the Unionville Historic District. The four properties are 42-44 Maple Avenue, which is, which is a historic known as the Planter and Porter Rental House, number four, and is currently owned by Cynthia M. Long, Timothy J. LeBoutier, and Patrick P. LeBoutier, and Children's of Paula and Patricia LeBoutier. This home will be in addition to the corner of Pitney Park Historic District. Okay, and I'll just read the numbers going forward. So, so the other three houses will be 20 Elm Street, 1761 Farmington Avenue, and 230 Main Street.
Second.
Okay, Kathy.
Shannon gave the presentation, and this is now, you're, you're approving the, these properties, and by doing that, you're amending the, the ordinance, the town ordinance. And as Paula had stated, that all the property owners are happy to be in the district, and, and Shannon, Shannon's here just in case you have any further questions.
Any questions for Shannon? Okay, great. Thank you very much. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Great, and two.
I move to award the contract for the purchase of Treated Road Salt for the 2018-2019 winter season to DRVN Enterprise Inc. of Weathersfield winter season to DRVN Enterprise Inc. of Weathersfield, Connecticut, at a purchase price of $73.50 per ton.
Second.
Even though we don't really want any winter salt, we do need it, and so this is the low bid, and this is to purchase our salt for our snow season.
Any questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sure.
In our budget, the supplies, materials and supplies, which I understand is the highway salt, was for $182,000. Are we anticipating purchasing more than 2,000 tons, or is it that we just got a really good deal?
Joe, how would you answer that?
The same price we had last year, and normally what we do is we hold some in reserve. So initially, we have, we go by 2,000 tons, and then we have the money aside for reserve. Usually what happens to that will get closer to the 1800 as opposed to the 1970. Basically, every material we have devised, we get that price.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. And three.
I move that the tax due on the October 1st, 2017 grant list for the property known as 440 Plainville Avenue and 8658 Plainville Avenue be abated.
Second.
What we're actually doing here is because when we own these properties, and by law, we're actually waiving us, so we don't pay ourselves the taxes.
Questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. And four.
I move to award a contract for a purchase of one Monroe Heavy Duty V-Box Spreader Dump Body to Equipment Service of Hartford, Connecticut, at a purchase price of $111,242.
Second.
This motion is to contract with the vendor to purchase and install the dump body component for the heavy-duty dump truck cab and the chassis that the town council previously awarded a contract. The heavy dump truck that will result from both purchases will be used by the highway and grounds operation, and the money is in the capital budget, and this is on a low bid.
Questions?
Sure.
Kathy, does this conclude then? Because I remember voting on the last one. Is this the last item for the dump truck?
Yes.
Other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. And five.
I move to approve the acceptance of potential staffing for adequate fire and emergency response grant from FEMA.
Second.
This is called the Safer Grant, which is staffing for adequate and fire emergency response. The Director of Fire and Rescue Services and the Volunteer Chiefs had recommended that the town apply for this grant. And what this grant does, it offsets the cost of hiring one additional firefighter for three years. The firefighter would be at the Farmington Fire Station. If awarded, this would allow us to provide an additional firefighter to meet the staffing needs over, and it would help us with the cost for over a three-year period. The cost share would be, in the first year, the town would pay 25% of salary and benefits, and FEMA would pay 75%. Year two would be 25%, and FEMA would be 75%. Year three would be 35% for the town and 65% for FEMA, and year four, it would be, the town would be responsible for 100%. Currently, staffing in the Town and Farmington Fire Department, and they have three career firefighters in two stations, East Farms and Tonxus, and two career firefighters in one station, Farmington, with staggered terms between 6:00 AM and 5:00 PM. We are heavily dependent on Miss Porter School to allow their employees, who are volunteer firefighters, to respond for calls during the daytime hours. The continued increase in calls for volume and the decrease of volunteer firefighters, and some just different things that are happening in Miss Porter's, is really, we can't be depending on Miss Porter's like we have been in the past. The potential grant is very timely because the fire department will again be requesting an additional firefighter. They requested one last year, and we, I cut it out before it got to you all, but it is something that we're going to need. And so this grant would be, if we get, if we get the grant, we would have that firefighter in this upcoming budget.
Questions?
What's the salary of a firefighter?
I think it's...
Starting salary is just under $55,000.
Think.
What, I didn't hear you.
$55,000.
Other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. And six.
I move to accept the extension of Wakefield Lane as a town road, a distance of approximately 465 linear feet to the existing terminus.
Second.
I'm not sure if we've done this with you guys yet, but we do accept roads once that they have met the basic standards after a development is put in. So we accept the town road, and then once we accept the town road, then we maintain the town road. We snowplow it and do very, you know, we maintain it. So this road is ready for acceptance. We do hold the bond for, I think, a year to make sure that there's no problems with the road, but we, it's recommended that we now accept this road.
Questions?
What happens if we don't?
If we don't accept it, then we wouldn't maintain it, and we would just leave it, but we...
Who's responsible then?
Well, the developer, that's really where it would be, but that really doesn't happen because we hold bonds from them to make them finish it so that we can then take it over.
Okay. Other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. And seven.
I move that $5,000 from the, from the town council contingency account be transferred to the town council account for expenses related to the Farmington Village Center Committee.
Second.
I'm recommending that we transfer from some funds out of our contingency account to be used to expenses related to the Farmington Village Committee. The Village Committee right now is in the process of hiring an independent licensed environmental professional, an LEP, to assist the town in its various environmental issues related to the Parsons property. So this will allow us to be able to contract with their service. Just FYI, I do anticipate that in the upcoming budget process, there are going to probably be various funds for these different committees that we're going to have to budget for. Because this is $5,000, I think it's appropriate to transfer money if it, some of these committees now are spending a little bit of money, but we're able to do that through different operating accounts, my accounts, and different things. But this is a larger dollar amount, so I think it's appropriate, and it's going for a specific item, which would be a landscaper, a licensed environmental person.
Any questions?
Sure. Kathy, is this for a Phase 1 report? Is this for, is it for a specific reason, or is it for...
This is the person that, the group, we have a contract with them. One is that they're going to review all the Phase Ones that were done, all the stuff on the Parsons property, the DOT things. They are going to kind of be our first stage of a consultant to give us just some background on, to help us negotiate with the State of Connecticut, what the Transfer Act is, how that works, and they will attend some of the Farmington Village Committee meetings to help them. So it's not for any other type of service, not for a Phase 2 or anything like that. It's really just for their expertise.
So are they, so it's going to be a document review? Are they going to do a standard Phase 1 where they're going to walk around the property, or are they just doing a document review?
I have the contract upstairs.
Okay.
Do you want, I could have, I could, would you like to see the contract? They have the various things that the group approved.
I don't think, is it a tie-in bond?
Yes, it was a tie-in bond.
They're reputable.
Okay.
I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, I have, we have it upstairs. I mean, really, the bottom line is that it's the beginning stages that they want to go through, all the documents that the DOT has already have. We need help with that. Then, there has been a Phase 1 done, but again, I am not 100% clear, the doc, from the documents, if the Phase 1 was just done on the parts of the property that they were there and cleaned up. So they have to look at, they're going to help us look at that and recommend what our next stages to be. And then the other big thing is really, they're going to help us, they're very familiar of how a process is, is how a town does go about acquiring a piece of property from the State of Connecticut, which we really don't have any experience in, so that's what we're using them for.
So that $5,000 is going to cover some of that consulting advice on top of a typical environmental...
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly. But I will send you over what we have.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions. And eight.
I move to approve the following property tax refund totaling of $24,187.3.
Second.
Questions?
Just so you know, we always do have a lot of property tax refunds because of taxes that were due, but because we didn't meet in July, these are July and August. I mean, I'm sorry. Is that right, Joe?
Yes.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, okay, thank you. I'm getting myself confused.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. And nine.
I move to change the voting members of the Farmington Village Center Committee to include the town historian and the Human Relation Committee Universal Design Advocate as a voting member.
Second.
Questions?
Is this going to change the quorum? Is there going to be any concern about not meeting a quorum moving forward, given that we're on a timeframe?
Right. No, it's just, it's now, instead of nine, nine voting members, we're going to have 11 voting members. So, good luck.
A lot of business. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay, could I have a motion to move to executive session for collective bargaining? We'll start with that.
Sure. I move to executive session to discuss matters concerning collective bargaining. Members, in attendance of the executive session will be limited to members of the town council, town manager, and assistant town manager and finance director.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay.